Public to view of the meeting, of course, it's being televised via FCTV. And real time public comment can be addressed to the ZBA utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. In order to use that, you can go to www.falmouthmass.us/zba. And with regard to public comment tonight, that will be at the top of the agenda. And I will address that again in a minute. I'll address other comments at this time. I'll introduce the board. My name is TJ Horry. I'm the chair of the board. We have Ken Foreman, who is the vice chair, Bob Dugan, who is the clerk. We have Scott Solinsky, who is a full voting member, Ed Van Kuren, who is a full voting member as well, Mary Berry, who is an associate member, and James Morse, who is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Adriana Catano from the Falmouth IT Department is assisting us. And thank you to FCTV as well for helping facilitate this virtual meeting. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests on special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which can be approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All the decisions that the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and also from the public and to allow a fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing would be closed and in the alternative, we would continue the hearing to a future date and time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. As for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. A motion would include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be if you're going to carry and would result in denial of the project. And for comprehensive permits, the vote is a simple majority. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to the agenda for tonight, we do have public comment. We have one continuation. We don't have any new hearings. And we have items on our open meeting agenda. So this first public comment is for anyone out there that has any comment on something that is not on the agenda tonight. And again, you can utilize the Zoom, the Zoom app. And the link to that is available at www.falmouthmass.us/zba. And if anyone out there does have any sort of public comment for something that is not on the agenda, go ahead, use the Zoom app, use your full name and address for the record, and anything that you'd like to announce, go right ahead. So the reason for the modified introductions tonight is because we do not have any new public hearings. We have one continuation, which is application 78-19 Buzzards Bay Development LLC, 40 Shore Street in Falmouth. As this application stands, we did close the hearing at our last meeting. So there is no more new testimony may be taken. And the purposes of tonight is for the board to discuss the project and possibly have a vote. And with this project, the voting members are myself, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Mary Berry. So we can get right into it. Would anyone like to start us off in terms of discussion of the project?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to just confirm that because it matters been closed, that the chat function has been disconnected for public interaction on the
I'm assuming that it has. I'll just, I'll defer to Adriana if that's been done.
You wanted to shut the chat function down?
If that's possible.
I think you can proceed even if the chat function is not officially shut down. I think once you announce that you're no longer accepting testimony, if anything is in, similar to a paper submission, it just wouldn't be accepted.
Correct, Noreen. That's what Thomas just said to me, saying we can't probably shut it down now that it's started, but you can just ignore it.
Very good. Thanks for Adriana, and thank you, Noreen. So again, for the purposes of this application, the hearing was closed at our last date. So no more testimony may be taken, whether it be verbal, written, or otherwise, I'd say. So that leaves us for board discussion. Would anyone like to start us off?
Well, just for, just for a few of the issues, I think we need to focus on, we've got issues with number of bedrooms that we've talked about before, garages, issue with that retaining wall and that size easement that was made. The housing coordinator, so Carla Ferroni, had submitted way back in December. And again, she's the housing coordinator for the town of Falmouth. She provided some comments regarding the affordable housing project at 40 Shore Street. There was a couple bullet points that she sent in. She said that the affordable unit should be the same size or similar as market rate units. She said the affordable unit should have the same exterior appearance as the market rate units. There was some concern that the historic house in front may require additional upkeep and maintenance, which could cause some financial hardship to a purchaser if that was an affordable unit. She commented that the units are too large because Falmouth keeps asking for one and two bedrooms, as stated in the housing production plan, that at least one unit should be visitable or accessible for ADA handicapped. She did mention that she felt the location was an excellent, very good location for a project, not close to the downtown, and that we also need to be aware of condo fees because they can be problematic if they rise over time, making some of the affordable units unaffordable. And in the mass housing letter that went to the town, when they discussed some of the issues that the town has responded on, the town did say, there's a bullet point here, that the municipality would like to see the proposed development be more responsive to local housing needs identified in its housing production plan and provide options other than three bedroom homes, such as one or two bedroom homes. There was also a comment there that the municipality had requested that the structures be cited to maximize orientation for solar panel use. I don't know if any of the other members remember or not, I'm not aware if we discussed solar panel use or not. I do know that the bedroom counts have now gone higher. So what we're looking at is we're looking at a project with eight buildings, five of which are four bedrooms, and three of which are three bedrooms. One of the affordable units, I think it's unit three, that's now supposed to be a four bedroom, did make a notation that that has one and a half baths. And just for usability nowadays, if we went with a four bedroom unit there, I would think that you would need at least two full baths for the occupants that are in a four bedroom I've made some comments on the garages in the past. I know that they did remove some of the garages. I think that the units either all have garages, one car garages, or they could go no garages. But at this point, we have one unit that has a two car, which is a market rate unit. And if the project was built as was stated right now, and you drove into the project, it would be very noticeable that there was one building alone that has, you know, a larger garage, which happens to be the market rate unit. So I just think that gives a disparity on social class when you go in one of those developments, and it wouldn't be hard to drop that to a one car. I noticed when they modified some of the garages, it seems they actually up the living space in many of the units. So if the board members want to discuss any of that to start, see what their comments are, we can go from there.
Thank you, Bob. And I think that's a, that's a good starting off point. Does anyone want to jump in with regard to, I guess I could say how the site's configured in terms of what Bob laid out, the proposed units and their accommodations?
I think they all should have one car.
All right, thank you, Ed. Mary, how do you feel?
I agree with that.
And I'm in, I'm in agreement with that, similar to the reasons that Bob already
Any comments regarding to bedroom counts where many of these are now switched up to four bedroom units versus a project that would have maybe all three bedroom units or, you know, a mix of configuration on bedrooms?
Bob, you seem, you seem to have that right in front of you. Could you give us the breakdown again, if you don't mind?
So right now, the proposal shows that five of the buildings are four bedrooms, and three of the buildings are three bedrooms. Let me see if I can get the unit designations. Noreen, do you have the unit designations with you of, out of those units, which ones are the affordable, and what the bedroom bath count is in each one?
Yes, so that's on your note number 14. So they're proposing unit one would be a three bedroom affordable unit. And the second unit they selected was unit three to be a four bedroom unit as affordable. And then now, unit one is to comprise 1,700 square feet, and unit three was to comprise
And unit, unit one at 1,700, is that the smallest square footage now in that complex? So I guess if we're looking at living space issues, if we want to look at those, most of the, most of the units in there seem to round, you've got 2,300 square feet, 2,400 square feet, 2,600 square feet. So on the market rate units, which is two, five, six, and seven, the smallest one of those is 24, and the other three are 2,600. On, on the two market units, four and eight, you've got 121 and 122. So the affordable basically is getting one at 17 and one at 23, which just seem a lot lower than the, the square footage is in all the other units. I don't know if they pull back, if we're removing one of those garages. If they go to single car garages, I'd rather see them keep the living spaces what they had proposed, instead of what the changes were, if they removed the garage and then changed up all the living spaces. 2,600 on, 2,600 living space on three units, and even the one next to it at 2,400, and that small, the area is a, it's a pretty big density size wise. I would have liked to see more three bedroom units, because it seems, it seems that's what, you know, that's what the town needs, the ones or twos. I don't know how much need they have for the fours. We haven't really been given anything from the town that says that they need four bedroom units. They all seem that they want to use, they need smaller units. You know, normally when we see some of these projects, the units themselves are usually very similar to each other, just so they, they look alike, and the square footages are similar, even though the, the market prices are different. It just seems to be a little bit of inequity in the, in the affordable units versus the market rates.
Thank you, Bob. And, and I'm okay with a little bit of, with a little bit of a discrepancy in between market rate units and, or, you know, any of the units altogether, I should say. Basically, what I'm trying to say is, I'm okay if it's not all cookie cutter, but if there is going to be some disparity, I'd like to see it, you know, more similar rather than such a disparity.
So I guess if we're looking size wise, that the, the biggest disparity is that the, that building one at the 1,700, where the, the next unit is 2,100, and most of them are 26. I know there was some discussion, you know, way back that we were wondering if, if we could suggest that the street unit, which was the 1,700, if they weren't going to make that bigger, actually be one of the market rate units, and giving one of the other units in back as one of the affordable units. So I don't know if, is any discussion on that of, of suggesting, you know, which units we would suggest be the affordable units in the project? I know it's ultimately up to, you know, the, the housing, but I think they would listen to the point that the town did submit that in advance. You've got a housing coordinator that submitted that in advance. You had a housing coordinator that did have concerns with using that main building in front as the affordable unit. I understand that it is on the main street, and it gives nice access, but I would assume that in some of these affordable units, you may get a family, you know, with children. And if you do have a family with children, I think safety sake, it'd be better to be inside the complex versus right on, on the, on the main entryway where the, you know, where the cars are coming in and out, because there really is no, there really is no play area or recreation space at all. You know, close enough in town, you've got the library, and you've got the playground, but if anyone is doing anything on the property itself, most of the areas are either causeway where the driveway where the cars are coming and going, or block parking areas. There's very few, you know, few grassy areas on the backs of the building. So I think if the affordable units had some kind of, you know, backyard space, it just might be more usable to them.
Thank you, Bob. Ed or Mary?
I think that's a fact, is that front unit is only 1,700 square feet, probably more suitable to somebody in, up in age or something, where they would be, would be willing to sit on the front porch and no kids involved. So I think it makes an argument, we're putting the kids in the back, or they put the three affordable ones off the street, and I'd vote for that.
I agree with that.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Mary.
Noreen, do you remember any discussion?
Regarding the four bedrooms, you know, the housing plan, housing production plan keeps mentioning three, and then all these builders keep coming, developers come along and say they want to put in a fourth one, you know, so let's hold their feet to the fire, just make it three.
Noreen, do you remember any discussion at all regarding the, the mention on the, on citing for solar at all? I don't remember any discussion on that. Do they have any plans to?
I don't have any record of that. I think that that comment came in from the town planner to Mass Housing when we were providing initial feedback, that that is a desirable circumstance for the town, but I don't think we had anything further on that.
So I know that they usually look to cite for solar. I don't really have much of an issue on this location if they didn't, only because it is right downtown, it's very dense, you don't have much of an open space, so, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the possibility in the current configuration to get really any active solar use in there. There was, there was the issue with the, that retaining wall. Did we need permission from the town? Noreen, did they ever follow that? They're still keeping that retaining wall right now as part of the proposal?
I know at one point in time, there had been some discussion about grading, and then they had talked about potentially going to a retaining wall, and then that was going to be a smaller size. And I don't recall if there was a further comment on that or not, I'd have to review the engineering comments.
Thank you, Noreen. And I know we do have a limited ability in terms of designating any sort of affordable units. I know that's kind of left up to the developer and Mass Housing. But do you have any more input in terms of how that goes, Noreen?
I think the board, you know, can certainly contribute to the conversation. You know, typically, the developers propose to you which units they plan to have as affordable. You know, certainly, the board is allowed to contribute to that conversation, and then typically, it is Mass Housing that makes the final designation.
Thank you, Noreen.
So, Noreen, if we, if, if, if in our final decision, we, we designate the need for different units to be the affordable units, and actually place in the decision whatever those unit numbers are, does that cause any issues at all as far as housing? Or they, you know, consider that, and if they didn't agree with it, they could just change that one item?
That would be my understanding. I think they do pay attention to which units, you know, the developer and the town have designated. But if they find, for example, that affordable units, we'll say are all at one end of a development as opposed to mixed throughout, they would typically seek a change for that.
So then I would suggest that we look at the development at the different units, and then, and then we know which ones they propose, which is now the, the unit on the street and unit number three. And if we felt that unit number one on the street would be best to be an affordable unit inside the complex, then we designate one of those other units, have that unit, the street unit be turned to a market rate unit, and then just support our conclusion with the reasons for it. As far as the situation where that retaining wall was, and, you know, I know we'll end up continuing this one more meeting anyways to, to review, but because they, they would need permission by the town to do the work they need there, and that's something that isn't guaranteed, that we should consider that area is something that wouldn't be allowed because we don't have any guarantee that it's going to be or not, and have them plan that the way they would if they did not need a retaining wall and didn't need to, to retain permission by the town to do any work in that area.
The comments that the staff engineer made to the original documents, the one when he looked at it in the 28th of May, Scott said that we requested the approved, that any approval includes a condition that holds the project to the soil erosion sediment control standard conditions, and that the installed components are inspected and approved prior to the start of any construction. We should put that in the document. That's in the letter that he responded to, to the original comments.
All right, thank you, Ed.
If, if we went with a suggestion of building number six as the affordable unit, and then building number one as a market rate, the way the unit is laid out, that would be one affordable unit in between each market rate unit. So it seems to be dispersed well throughout the complex. The first market, the first affordable unit, which is unit three, would be the third one in. The first three units will come out directly on the common driveway. And then if we did unit six as the other affordable unit, six, seven, and eight, all share a separate parking space area before you get to a main driveway. So the dispersment would be well, and it seems like, you know, square footage wise, it would be better.
You bring up a good point, Bob, because typically with these projects, we do like to see the affordables dispersed throughout the property.
The affordables would be three and six, and what was the other one?
So you'd have, you'd have the first unit in, number one would be market, then number two would be market. As you turn the corner to the left, unit three would be affordable. Then at that dead end, you have two units, four and five, those would be market. Then you get building number six, which would be affordable, and then followed by, again, two market units, seven and eight. Unit number five. Yeah, there's only two out of the, out of the. And then a unit number five seems to be the one, I think, that is retaining right now, the two car garage. And you would pull that back to a one car garage. Once you pull that to a one car garage, all units have a one car garage, so it's, it's, it's really, it's a nice layout. The only thing I would suggest again is when they're going, if they convert that to a one car garage, they don't convert the rest of that area that they just took out to more living space for that unit. You know, also regarding the, the current configuration, so where they were suggesting unit one and three for the affordable units, those are the only units that are suggested to have one and a half baths. The unit two market rate that they're suggesting has three and a half. Unit four market, two and a half. Unit five market, three and a half. Unit six market, three and a half. Unit seven market, three and a half. And unit eight, two and a half. If you're able to, to put that many baths in other units, there should be at least two full baths in an affordable unit.
So for number three, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so on their current plan, number three, which is their suggested affordable, has one full and one half bath. If we, if we switch out unit one for unit six as the affordable, then that unit six as an affordable would actually have three and a half. And the market rate unit one would be one and a half. If you're marketing any property nowadays on new construction, and in general, you're looking at three bedrooms, it, it's pretty much expected that you have two baths, two full baths. Now, one could be a three quarter, it could be, you know, have a stall shower versus a, you know, a set tub. But it's pretty much expected on, on new construction nowadays that, you know, people are looking for at least two full baths.
And I, I think that's a reasonable point, Bob.
When the project was first reviewed, Ken had a comment way back when we were looking at the landscape plan. And one of the comments was related to, you know, in a lot of these projects on the trees that are presented, they're just a very small caliper on the trees, and Ken had asked at that point if they could look at some of those trees and, and you know, change the sizing in. I know that they did mention that they would consider it and do it. But we don't have any time that I can see where the landscape plan has been revised at all. So they did hear the comment, but they just decided to go with the proposal that they have. So when we're reviewing this, may want to look again at the landscape plan to see what the, the actual planting design is and actually what the tree sizes are. Because I, I think you could put a larger tree in there without, you know, affecting, there's enough room for it. And where these buildings are so large on that size lot at the twenty six hundred square feet, I think would be a better setup to have a larger tree, just to compensate for some of the size of these buildings.
All right, and to your point, Bob, about the landscape plan, I along with the discussion about the, the size of the caliper tree, I, I do remember size of the fencing as well. I think an immediate abutter wanted a neat foot fence, I believe the applicant stated that they preferred a six foot fence. And I think it was to allow for some of the some of the plantings to actually adequately grow. I'd have to look back and find that in the minutes that I have in front of me. Does anyone else have that recollection?
Yeah, I do remember there was comments on the, on the actual fence size.
Yeah, there was at least one abutter, possibly two, that specifically asked for eight. So I will have to look back to see if there was part that was going to be six and part eight.
As far as handicap accessible or visitable, the applicant did state that all the units would be handicapped, visitable.
On the first floor.
It's also mentioned that the, the applicant does not intend to phase this project in. So it seems like they would be doing the entire build at one time. Because of that, we just have to be cognizant, because where it's located downtown in the street, if they're doing all of the construction at one time, I just don't know how you fit all the construction equipment on that site and do all the buildings at the same time. So we may want to review what their, what their construction plan was.
That's a good point, Bob. There's a, a lot going on there at once, since it's not a phased construction.
There was also, there was, so there was an engineer's note, and this was way back, that during a perk test, they found unsuitable soils and buried debris. And they identified different sheets on them, and that is something that would have to be removed. I almost think that's something that has to be, you know, checked into prior to any construction. I know that when I walked on there in different occasions, the area that I think the perk test was done, I don't think is the area that I was seeing all other debris that was on the site. So if we're doing a plan like this, we would need something in that in advance of construction and doing the foundations, that they do some kind of a test for the debris and unsuitable soils and make sure that everything is removed prior to any construction. You don't want to have a situation where the soils are just being shifted to another area and the debris hasn't been removed. And again, I, I, I think there's more, I think there's a larger area than just where the perk test may have been. We never saw any evidence that they tested anywhere else. I noticed that there was a lot of, it seemed like landscaping debris in this, in the site, so I don't know if some of that might have been from stuff that was brought in after the fact, and maybe they were using it as a site to move stuff out, or if it's stuff that was dug up on the site. But that's a concern. We have to make sure it's taken care of in the decision.
And just to extend that thought a little bit, Bob, in terms of stormwater management, once everything's built, of course, there'd have to be dry wells, keeping, maintaining wastewater on site.
Yep, and I, and, you know, again, with the situation with engineering, we had discussed this before, and I think a clerk of the work situation here is needed to check the work as it's been done with buildings in situations like this that are this large. If, if the project is built and some of these things go up and there is a discrepancy, it would be extremely hard to change anything, since it's all being phased in at once. I don't know if we may want to consider as each building gets enclosed, that we get some kind of a certified plan on size of each building.
I think that would be reasonable.
Well, the document that Scott completed in back in May, the end of May, said we requested an outside consultant be hired as a clerk of the works and for all the inspections and et cetera. And that should definitely be put in there. Now to give the developer another little bit of an incentive to hurry up and get it done, because he's going to be paying for that guy.
And I think it's a, it's a good comment too, he made, that it has to be someone of an outside representative, you know, just another party that isn't involved directly in the project.
Is, is there any concern about the renovation and that historic structure, which was mentioned, they would be basically taking all of the interior away? What kinds of things they will be running into?
I think anytime, Mary, that when, whenever you have a project like that with a historical building and you open it up, you're you're opening up a whole, whole can of worms, but you, you never really know what's there until you open it up.
They did convey at one of the meetings that they will actually be gutting that entire interior, so I think it's basically going to be a shell that they're going to be working with.
I know, I, I meant more concerns about what types of dangerous things are in there while they are doing that and the disposal of them.
So any sort of hazardous material?
Actually, that's a, that's a really good idea. You know, with the older homes, of course, it's very common to have the lead paint. So I don't know what the situation is on the exterior, but they probably should make sure that there's if they're going to be working or removing any of that, that issue that there's some kind of test be done, any lead paint that's being removed is removed properly. I know on some of the old buildings, I don't know if it's in this one, but you can get into issues with asbestos on piping or in old heating systems, boilers, furnaces. We didn't get in that before, but I think it might be good to focus on that building, that anything they do on the renovation due to its age and antiquity, that the best building be tested for any hazardous materials, and if any are found, and they be a you know, dealt with, either remediated or moved in the, in the proper manner with the proper permits.
I think usually border health gets involved with that.
Yeah, they usually do. The problem is if you're taking down a building and you don't go for certain permits except for demolition, I don't think they require you to check some of those items. What happens a lot is, is things like this get removed. If you have a common situation where someone has a very old building and windows are common to have lead paint in them, you get an owner contract that comes in, they just yank the windows and, and they, they're not tested, so they just yank the windows, demolish them, take them off, and then put new windows in and then have to test. So because this one building was, was listed on the reg, the register, I think I would require them to have some kind of a lead paint or hazardous materials test before they demolish or do their work, just to make sure that nothing they're touching is going to affect other properties. I mean, that building is pretty much basically on Main Street. If they did get into a situation where with lead paint that they had to handle, they would have to protect the front of that building so dust or anything doesn't go on the, on the rest of the area downtown. And I hadn't thought of that before until Mary just brought it up, but I've just dealt with a lot of old buildings in the past. So I think that's something that, that safety wise, I know we can always look at situations that have to do on public health and safety. And any kind of demolition in an antique building in front like that could have an effect on public health and safety if any of the products that they're removing are hazardous. Noreen, I know that the, when the applicant changed his bedroom counts, do you know if anything was submitted that showed that the original shared septic still met whatever the new counts were that he was suggesting?
So I think they essentially added one bedroom. They had originally planned for, I believe it was twenty eight. And I believe we had testimony from their engineer that they could accommodate one additional bedroom, which is what they did. I'll have to double check the record, but that's my recollection.
So if we go at the bedroom count that they've suggested on the proposal, then at that point, I would suggest that an engineer just make sure that that septic system meets the proper design. If we go with a less bedroom count, we won't have to worry about that, because it already covers what they had prior to adding that one additional bedroom. And again, just, just relating to the bedroom, so the the housing production plan from twenty eighteen, when they were doing the needs of the town, it did reflect a demand for units with less than three bedrooms, and the reason was for seniors, singles, and new families. This is an excellent area for that because it's right downtown. It established a production goal, two in here over affordable units over the next five years, but it, it seems that, that all the issues we have or what the town needs, like Ed said, is that you know, we ask for one or two bedrooms because that's what we need, hoping that a developer will come in and do them. And then they don't do the one and two bedrooms, they max them out on the lot. In this sense, you have a section downtown where now most of the units are actually four bedrooms, where even though one and two bedrooms are needed, you know, a three bedrooms, I suppose you could say, would be called for on the higher end. But it doesn't seem that four bedroom units are what they're looking for directly in this area, in the Falmouth area from, you know, the housing coordinate and everything else. So I, I think we need to seriously consider the bedroom counts. Regarding that building number one, which is the, the Silas House, the applicant did state that in unit number one, both the interior and exterior of that dwelling would be updated. So they would not have higher maintenance costs. To do that, you pretty much have to remove all of that exterior siding, which again is why I think they need to have some kind of a hazardous test before they remove any of that, that material. And TJ, on your comments regarding the fence, the, the abutters to the proposal, they express, expressed that a, an eight foot fence was preferred, plus landscape to buffer the units. They did inquire about how many parking space would sufficiently meet the number of the units. Concern about density and closeness of setback, which we get commonly, and many times we can't do much with the closeness of the setback. Requested minimal lighting at the street. And they did have concern about dumping of construction materials on the site, so we do have comments from abutters that also had issues with construction materials that might be a hazard. If we look at the project in general on the parking. It looks like buildings one, two, and three, you'd have a garage and probably enough room for one or two cars directly in front of the garage. Building three, maybe, maybe one or a smaller car to fit two. When you get to building two, I mean, building four and five, because they end on kind of a gravel paving area, we'd have to look at a plan, I'd have to go through here again to see what the parking designations were in that, in that area. Same with the gravel paving area for building six, seven, and eight. I'd have to go through the file, but we'd want to take a look at before the decision to have the the designation of what parking areas go with each unit. I don't know if there would be any ample space in here anyway for guest spaces, and maybe where you're downtown anyways, you wouldn't need it. People could park in the downtown or some of the downtown parking areas and walk over. But I just don't see right now the designated parking spaces. I just see the driveways and the Noreen, do you remember if you saw something that actually showed the parking spaces?
I think the testimony was that there would be typically three spaces available per unit. Essentially, one in the garage, and then I presume two outside each unit.
That's correct.
So in that case, I guess we would just have to look at the area for building six, seven, and eight, and building four and five, because those are shared areas. And I can go through the file again, or maybe Noreen can go through the file, and just to make sure that there is enough space in those shared parking areas for traffic to come in and out, and also the parking for that amount of vehicles.
Regarding the construction and the fact that all the construction will occur all at once, is there concern about summer months? Peak times?
So I think as far as construction goes, while you're able to designate I think that the summer is typically the time where even though there's a lot of activity and probably a lot of visitors, is probably an ideal time for construction as well. So I don't know that you'd be able to, is that what you're time for construction as well. So I don't know that you'd be able to, is that what you're indicating, limiting construction during the summer?
I don't know what options would be available, but I'm just thinking about with so much traffic, it's the downtown area and tourists in town, if there was any way to alleviate that somehow. Since it's all going to be done at once.
So it may be a case because there is such limited access to the site, no access on the main street, that maybe it would be better to be phased in versus all at once.
I'm not sure that you can condition a phase. You know, I think probably the construction would be at the developers choosing, but I think you can be very emphatic about what types of conditions you expect them to maintain.
So in so in this case, just because of the nature of the lot and the access in and out, whether they phase or not phase, they're going to have to keep all the construction equipment, workmen and materials on site. You're not going to be able to block the sidewalk. It's a full sidewalk that goes all the way down Shore Street. And there is absolutely no parking on Shore Street either side. So I guess the best thing would do to just condition that all activity happen on site, nothing blockade the sidewalk. And I know they can they can do stuff with police details when they're doing actually utility changes. There is a telephone pole there that I know is going to have to be moved. It's in the main entrance. Something like that I think would get a waiver anyways because they actually moved the pole. They would need a police detail. But you have issues with that and you do have a worry that, and again, this just comes to how the project is managed and you hope that the the builder manages it well. You have a lot of workers that are probably going to be involved in that. They might have separate vehicles and you have to make sure that all those private vehicles are also on site. That there's no blockade of the sidewalks and no blockade of the main streets.
You know, they also may be able to have a circumstance where they park offsite and carpool together to the site as opposed to multiple parties having individual cars there.
Yeah, I think they could do a management plan to handle that. Like you said, they could carpool. They could do different situations. The problem that happens a lot is that, you know, if there is, if if the management isn't there one day or something comes up that you start seeing cars parked on a sidewalk or having no access. So I guess we would just have to be very emphatic that if those situations ever happened, I don't know what else you can say except don't do it, but.
I would also add, I would also add you have an awful lot of pedestrian and bike traffic because the beach and surf drive beach is right down there. Awful lot of traffic. Pedestrian and and bike.
I think because of the activity that will happen on the site too regarding the construction that it would probably be to the benefit of the of the developer to actually have somebody posted at the entrance. It actually regulates the traffic in and out. So you don't have situations where a truck or something gets blocked on the main road and then and then it blocks up the whole street and there's limited access. Of course, we always see more of that in the summer. We may see a little less of it this year. But once you have a blockade on that road, you would, there's no other way to go. You'd have to go around to the beach and around town to get in and out. And again, if if, you know, there was ever fire calls or anything, they can't have any any trucks or anything blocking the road. So maybe we could ask that the developer actually have somebody that during work hours posted at the main entrance. Someone that can actually delegate the traffic in and out so you don't have any kind of a blockade.
Could you condition that they have some kind of a plan for dealing with that because of the unique nature of where that location is during the summer months?
I think we just tell them what to do and how they do it. That's up to them.
And I I think it can be appropriately conditioned and outlined in in any possible decision.
And I think like you said, if you do condition it, you can add that they submit a management plan. I mean, it's not too hard to write one. The developer can write a one page. You know, have an entry point. So everybody knows where they're coming to and fro on the site. That'll give it an idea because we don't know what kind of what kind of vehicles or what kind of size of construction equipment you have to get in and out. Also want to make sure that there are dust control situations put up because, you know, bringing away earth and moving material back there in and out on Shore Street, if any of that stuff gets on the sidewalks, that can be a problem for the pedestrian traffic that's downtown. So have some kind of control besides the fencing. You'd want to have the whole site fenced off so that the site is closed during construction, so nobody wanders on the site. And then have some kind of a a dust control at the main entrance and make sure that on their management plan, they have something that cleans up anything that that, you know, may get out of hand at the entrance, which which could happen anyways, but make sure that they take care of it. So I think that having having them actually submit prior to construction at least their management plan so that we have it on file. So that if you have a situation where the construction starts and now it's a problem, we actually have a management plan that they submitted to go by and that just gives us a little more, you know, teeth if it has to go to a point where it has to be enforced if if the developer doesn't take care of it.
You know, that type of thing might fall under the clerk of the works as well. I mean, I know that they're responsible for managing inspections and all that sort of thing, but given the size of the site, I think it would be reasonable that that person could oversee that piece as well.
So that's actually a good idea if if he was in charge because again, it's an outside party. I know that in a lot of areas when they do this kind of construction, when it's down near downtown or commercial districts, it's common to have a tire washing station so that when the trucks go back and forth, the material doesn't get all over the road. Main Street downtown has just been paved. So you wouldn't want to have everything on the downtown paving area, but that's pretty common on any kind of a large construction project and the developer is probably aware of that anyways.
Good points, Bob.
And we are in a time of COVID.
Are there any other main issues that we want to discuss?
As far as lighting goes, I think we just do what we usually do, dark compliant, dark side compliant lighting and just make sure that none of the lights go onto a butters properties.
Yeah, that's already in what Noreen's type.
And I suppose we should go over the requested waivers. Do you have the waivers list, Noreen, of just the requested on a?
Yes, hold on one sec.
No problem.
I read it today. I'm looking for it. Page nine at the top.
Yeah. So as far as the waivers, so they're looking for section two forty dash twenty four A permitted use one family detached homes. Section two forty sixty six C eight. The number of bedrooms exceeding one bedroom for thirteen thousand five hundred square feet of lot area. It requires an enhanced nitrogen nitrogen removal system. Section two forty sixty six D, one dwelling per lot. Section two forty sixty seven A, minimum frontage. Section two forty sixty eight A, minimum setback from street frontage. And section two forty dash sixty nine, maximum lot coverage by structure.
I think we all agree on that all of that, right?
Yeah. Does anyone have any comments on the requiring enhanced nitrogen removal removal system?
No comments on that. And did we get into that at all? I don't. I don't remember too much testimony regarding it other than.
No, I think we had so many, so many other issues that we went back and forth with and in most cases, things that we requested just, I don't want to say ignored, but a lot of the stuff that that we looked for weren't on revised plans.
All right.
The only comments we did have is that the septic that has been designed would would qualify for what they were looking for. It is a shared system. I don't see any issues with with the other waivers. One family detached homes, one dwelling per lot, minimum frontage. Minimum setback from street frontage. That's mainly the main house that's there anyways. Maximum lot coverage by structure. They're just going for larger homes.
Right. So I don't have any issues with those waivers, Bob. Any other issues that we want to discuss?
So ju- just to circle back for a minute on the affordable units. It's like you were selecting buildings three and six. And now both three and six are both proposed to be four bedroom units. Building units one, four and eight are the only ones that were listed as three bedroom.
So I guess the issue that we'll have to do a final decision on is is are we looking for units that are four bedrooms or are we asking? I mean, this is what this is what they proposed. So this is what their last plan was. You know, according to all the documentation from the town, the housing coordinator and everyone else, four bedrooms is just an overage for what we're looking for in town. Our choice would be if we change them up to three bedroom units and see what happens at that point. I know, Noreen, you had made some comments in the past that in general on mass housing that that they may may not be in favor of four bedroom units as affordable units. But if we do change the units out, they should all probably be similar versus market rates at four and everyone else at three.
Right. If if we were going that route and then seems that bedroom count is a discussion to be had. And I know that we've struggled with it as a board and with the housing production plan versus what's presented to us in the past. But if if we would have to choose between the three beds and four, I I would almost say that one affordable should be a four and the other affordable should be a three bed, just to disperse it.
Yeah, I think I think if we're going to do a mix between threes and fours, you can mix them, but they should be of equal counts. And if you decide not to do that, then you should probably do a complex that's all three bedrooms. So right now you've got going back to the count.
So one question. If I recall, there was a discussion about, maybe I'm not remembering, the interior of the units, if the bedroom count, what goes up or down, the size of the unit stays the same. They're not going to make the structure smaller. It will be the same.
You might be, you might be right, Mary. I think I remember that as well.
I think I see Ken saying, yeah. If I recall, it had to do from their standpoint about marketability.
Right.
So that would actually make sense that if they went down in bedroom count and but still kept the same square footage, they could they could market at a higher rate. I I think you were looking more at bedroom count itself. I think I think unit three and unit six are the best affordable due to placement. Disperses through the units equally. If we're going to
I agree.
Go with a three, at least one of the affordables being a three versus a four, and I would hope that the housing council would say that, you know, four bedrooms just is an overkill. Then I would want to make sure that out of the except out of the eight units, you get four threes and four fours.
I might suggest asking the affordable housing person from the town, take a look and do an analysis. My recollection, and it's just a recollection, was that we were pretty darn heavy in threes and fours already. So you might look and see if she has a suggestion for what might be best.
So where that would probably be convenient, but because we've the hearing is closed, what you might need to be able to do is I think there were references in her letter and in the file on the housing and they may actually refer to that situation. So if it's something that's already been submitted to the file, we could use that information on on why we're just, you know, why we're asking for a bedroom count change. It 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 shouldn't be a surprise to the applicant because I think this was mentioned at the first proposal. There's always been a discussion on bedroom counts and what the town has suggested they need and what's actually needed.
It was read into the file.
So we could, so we could definitely use that, you know, that information. But I.
It's also like eight months ago, I think. I think you should go back and visit that. Because it was eight months ago, we should be able to ask you a question.
Well, it's definitely a possibility because, you know, we'll be continuing this one more. So Noreen, I I because we've got stuff entered into the file, does it give us the ability to ask a question regarding information that's been submitted?
So what specifically are you looking for?
My my suggestion was that there's a a discussion with the board here about three, four, the the number of bedrooms. In the housing production plan, it lays out. We had mentioned it in a prior forty B, if I recall, the number of three bedroom and four bedroom and one bedroom and two bedrooms that they were looking for. And my recollection was that the percentage of completed already existing in those higher numbers was pretty darn close to being there. So could could one take a look at the housing production plan and see what those, see if there's a a trend that might be able to support what we would decide or consider in our decision.
And there are references in the file too, specifically the housing production plan. So that should allow us to go into the plan itself and pull out the detailed information that we need.
I believe we did it, Noreen, in a prior decision on a forty B.
I can I can take a look at the housing production plan and see what what's provided there.
Thank you, Noreen. Anything else?
No, just, just one more question for Noreen, just a clarification again on timelines. If we continue this hearing tonight so that we can get additional information and the members can think about the discussion that we've had tonight. To the next hearing, and at that next hearing. We go over that information and at that point go to a draft decision. Um, I just want to make sure we're still all within the timeline, so we don't have anything that runs out.
So well, due to the governor's um. Stated emergency with COVID. All the deadlines have been extended. The typical deadlines that you are. Expected to abide by, you have flexibility with that during this point in time. You know, obviously, you want to make sure that you are being as efficient with time as possible. So that you're not, you know, unduly holding things up.
So what would be the next possible date if we continue this evening?
Looking at July twenty.
I'm sorry, did you say twenty-three?
Twenty-three, yeah.
TJ, can I make one suggestion? I know I'm not a voting member on this one, but. We have this draft. To work with. And if people have specific thoughts for adjustments to the conditions or the findings, they could submit those in writing to Noreen and she can incorporate them. Into the. Revised. Decision. Draft decision.
Alright, so.
Might make things move along a little more crisply.
Thank you, Ken.
So in unless anyone else has any comments at this point, I'd probably make a motion to continue this hearing to July twenty-third. Allowing the members tonight, as Ken had suggested, to send in um, any of their comments for revision. Um, also going over the information that we've heard this evening, and the administrator can get us the information we're looking for regarding the housing production plan. And then we could review that draft with the member comments on the twenty-third. And hopefully on that point, get to a point where we can um, you know, come to a final decision for a following vote at the meeting following the twenty-third.
Very good, so the motion was made by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed. Uh, roll call vote, Ed.
Oh, the Ed Van Kuren, I.
Thank you, Ed. Mary?
Mary, Mary, I.
Bob? You're muted, Bob.
Robert Dugan, I.
And TJ Hari, I. Uh, so this is continued. And so she can work on the draft decision. Alright, just reading off of the agenda straight down, uh, we. Public hearings, we don't have any. Onto the open meeting agenda items, we have voting the minutes. Of June eleventh and June twenty-fifth, uh, we'll.
And we are, we are tabling the twenty-fifth.
Tabling the twenty-fifth, I thought, so thank you, Noreen. Uh, but we do have the minutes from June eleventh, as everyone had a chance to take a look at them. Anyone, would anyone like to make a?
I would move that we approve the minutes of June uh, eleven.
I got it. Alright, motion approved the minutes for June eleventh. Motion was made by Ken and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ed.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken Forman, I.
Mary?
Mary, Mary, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
James?
James Morse.
And Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
Alright, so. Minutes are approved and we are tabling the June twenty-fifth minutes. Uh, onto the next agenda item, we have reorganization of the board. Uh, so, uh, by our own bylaws and in the town, we are charged with reorganizing. The officers for the board uh, come every July, it's usually the first meeting that we have in July. Um, I have discussed the issue uh, with everyone, and I believe the. The officers as they stand now are willing. To continue in that role. And in order to actually vote, uh, someone can make a motion for each position, we'll do clerk, uh, vice chairman, chairman. Uh, and just for the purposes of the record, someone can make the motion. Uh, I'll ask if there's any other. Nominations to be made, and then we'll have a roll call vote for each position. Uh, so, is there any nominations to be made for clerk?
I could nominate Robert Dugan for clerk.
I'll second it.
Second.
Are there any other, any other nominations for the position of clerk? Seeing none, motion was made by Ken, and I'll give the second to Ed for Bob to serve as clerk, we'll do a roll call vote, Ken.
And Forman, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Mary?
Mary, Mary, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
James?
James Morse.
Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
Alright, so that passes. Bob, congratulations, we got you again for a year. Alright, are there any nominations to be made for the position of vice chairman?
So I'll make a motion to nominate Ken Forman as vice chairman.
I'll second it.
Alright, are there any other nominations to be made? Seeing none, um, Bob has made the nomination for Ken to serve as vice chairman and seconded by Scott, we'll do a roll call vote. Ken?
And Forman, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Mary?
Mary, Mary, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
James?
James Morse.
There we go, Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
Alright, passes unanimously, Ken is vice chair for another year, congrats, Ken.
My last term, I might add.
Well, we'll make it a good one. Alright, and the position for chairman, is there any motion to be made for the position of chair?
So I'll make a motion to nominate TJ Hari for chairman?
Alright, are there any other nominations to be made?
I'll second that as well.
Alright, so, motion uh, to appoint myself, TJ Hari as chairman, motion was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Roll call vote once again, Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Mary?
Mary, Mary, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
James? Muted, James.
James Morse, unmuted.
There we go, Scott?
Scott Zalinski, I.
Alright, and TJ Hari, I, so I'll be accepting the chairmanship for another year. Alright. Uh, on to board discussion. Any board discussion to be had?
I did have a question uh, about the, because I've been kind of cleaning up my office, I ran across the. Couple of files on uh. Bylaw revisions, uh, where they stood, has there been? Any progress at all on that?
So can we have gone through, uh. I think. Necessarily all the revisions, but they are intending to start with a re-qualification. So there were uh. Two gentlemen that were hired to essentially guide the zoning and planning board. Members who contributed to this um, re-qualification effort to quantify the bylaw such that, you know, archaic. Um, bylaw sections that were in there that were no longer used or repetitive or. Definitions scattered throughout, they basically gone through and tried to reorganize that. Make everything more user friendly, but it. Did not make any major changes, because the intent was to essentially re-qualify by law. And and subsequent to that. They wanted to, you know, move forward with updates and changes that needed to be made. Um, that being said. There were a couple of, I think, you know, s- fall town meetings, spring town meeting that they had targeted but weren't quite ready for prime time. And now with uh, COVID, obviously that's impacted your town meeting. And, you know, which polls you're gonna be able to hear, et cetera. So I'm not clear about when this will be before the town. Uh, I don't know if it would be something that they'd be able to do this fall town meeting, I think it's gonna depend on. You know, how the health of the. Town and nation moves forward. But, you know, that piece is pretty well tied up. Um, so I would expect that they would be getting out a final copy to everybody. You know, certainly well in advance of when that would be voted at town meeting, but the majority of the work for the re-qualification has been done.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anything else for board discussion? I do, so we have uh, management of a butters participation for the Zoom hearings, I don't know if anyone's come up with anything else or.
So again, I think, you know, some of the problem for folks in general is that you had very essentially open hearings in the past where you met in the selectmen's me- meeting room. And that whenever there was a case to be heard, that any interested parties. Could just appear that night at the meeting. Uh, if they were interested in speaking, they could just walk to the podium, and I think there's certainly. More hesitation now to use the chat function. Uh, you know, we are trying to reach out to people. More ahead to give them access to information. Um, you know, if people contact us with concerns or issues, certainly we'll try to get them to send those via email so that you can look at those ahead. But I think there's still is some. Connect with all who. Like participating essentially the old fashioned way, they felt, they feel more in touch with the board and that you're able to hear them. And, you know, they're able to voice their concerns that way, so. You know, there there are are still some. Concerns being expressed, I think, townwide about how we can better manage that type of thing. And that's not just with zoning, I think it's with all the boards.
Right.
Plus, we look much better in person.
We sure do. Anything else for board updates? Alright, seeing.
When's the town hall gonna be open?
More discussion, board updates, yeah, town hall, any, any news, Noreen?
So last I heard, they, they are eyeing some point in July. There hasn't been a specific date discussed, you know, we are going through great efforts in the town hall to make sure that. Everybody within offices is properly distanced. That, you know, we're providing for um. Hand sanitizing stations, wearing of masks, so we're all essentially following through on protocol that the governor's office has issued. For workplaces, and um. You know, you'll notice the next time you are in town hall that one of the first things you'll you'll see is that. There's been quite a bit of plexiglass installed to minimize transmission. The first. Point that you would notice that is when you come in the front doors and we have essentially a, an. Woman who's a greeter slash information officer who's right at the front door. And typically what had happened in the past is everybody and anybody was breathing on her. So she now has lovely plexiglass around her to keep her protected and to keep. Um, public safe, uh, you also see in the um, clerk's office, in the assessor's office, in the collector's office. Building apartment, everybody has these plexiglass shields installed so that we can manage to make sure that this uh. COVID does not. Get transmitted anymore than it has already and try and keep everybody safe and healthy so that we can manage the town's business for you and be here.
Thank you, Noreen. Uh, in terms of uh, any potential return for us for meeting in person, would that be at a date? Further along than the town hall reopening, or?
I think it's going to depend on what they decide for gathering, I think right now. They're not looking to reopen the meetings in the selectmen's room, because while. You as the board members could potentially. Meet there. Uh, they would certainly not want to have the audience set up the way it has been in the past with people sitting shoulder to shoulder, that's just not. Something that they can do at this point in time. This may be sort of a general rollout where they will eventually open the town hall to. The public to be able to come in, but it may be continued to be a delay for board meetings.
And uh, I'm in, I'm inspired by the town meeting which was held outside on uh. The ball field or the football field, uh, perhaps a larger venue might be. Necessary. Uh, maybe not the library, I think that's still maybe too small, maybe something like the Mall and Hall Gym, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. Anything to get back and meeting in person would be nice, I know we all appreciate the efforts of the IT department and FCTV. I don't know, I just thought about. I hear the conference table is open too, Ed. But anyways. Uh, something else for board.
It's called the conference table.
It is. Something, something.
Under new ownership, is that right?
It is.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, something else for a board update, I just want to acknowledge uh, Richard Johnson who is watching, I see him in the uh, the attendees list. Uh, as everyone knows, and some people might not know, uh, he is the. Observer for the League of Women Voters here in Falmouth. Uh, he has an attendance record as good as any, any one of us members. And he also provides an update to the League of Women Voters uh, every year, and I believe that was just released the, within this past month. Uh, I read it myself on the League of Women Voters. Uh, website, so, thank you, Richard, for everything you do, and thank you for the update. And letting everyone know what we're up to uh, as a town board. Anything else for board updates? Alright, future agenda items. Alright, seeing none, our next meeting is July ninth, next week. Everyone have a happy and safe fourth.